First of all, I just wanted to note, our staff has tried to line up an interpreter, and that's person from, what's the group?
ASL Source.
ASL Source is supposed to be here. If they're here, please identify yourself. We can wait another moment or two, but we want to get started. They were supposed to be here, contracted with them to come at, or connected with them coming at 5:30, and it's a few minutes after that. So, we'll wait another couple of minutes, and then we'll get started. Hopefully, we'll be able to make sure that we can, make sure everyone has an opportunity Okay, thank you, and we are going to go ahead and get started, and if the individual from the sign language company arrives, we hope they will identify themselves as quickly as possible. First of all, I'd like to call the city council meeting for December 12th, 2018, to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, you know, this past weekend, there's been so many events that happened in our community. The Kriskingle Market, the Nutcracker Ballet was here, there was a variety of events. Actually, I and six of my grandkids got to drop the first puck at a storm hockey match on Saturday night. And it really comes down to how much family is important, not all the time, but especially this time of year. And, you know, I was blessed to have all 10 of my grandchildren in town this past weekend, but it's really important to the understanding of sharing happiness with our family, our friends, and our community. And I think the sign language person has arrived, I think, is that correct? In the back of the room, somebody sent me a note? No, okay. But, thank you. For all of that, as we think about sharing happiness amongst our family, our friends, and our community, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to ask, from Troop 43, CJ Cox, Joseph Christopherson, and Malachi Wilkie to come up and join me, and as we begin this, Alderman Cluell is going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and we'll have these Boy Scouts come up and join us. If you guys want to come around, you can come around that way, over that way. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. We'll wait till they get up here, if you would, Rich. Thank you. Okay. Rich?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, it's, we're going to ask our city clerk to call the roll. It's kind of bittersweet on two counts. One, Brian is here, as our new deputy city clerk, but after a long time, Jackie, this is her last meeting, so I'm going to say, Jackie, would you call the roll, even though I think Brian's going to do it? Or maybe you are. Oh, fantastic. So Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Cluell.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Jackie, and we will thank you more throughout the meeting. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and welcome you, as begin this meeting of our city council, to welcome you and all those in attendance, and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for being here. With that, will an alderman move approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for November the 28th?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just wanted to remind you, this will be our last city council meeting for the year. It will start again in January.
Thank you very much. Our assistant city administrator, Mr. Wright, thank you. Will an alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole meeting, for December 5th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, that has been approved. I just wanted to note, we're moving on to appointments, proclamations, and so forth. A little bit, our normal procedure is, we would read these appointments and vote. You know, I've thought about this, and I know there's some people that have some interest and concerns, and I'm going to change the protocol a little bit, that is our protocol, but I'm going to adjust that a little bit, which I'll outline for you as we move forward. You know, what this is, that we're looking at tonight, is literally a process whereby we have three commissioners whose terms have expired, and we had eight applicants who applied for those positions. And I, if you'll notice, in many of you who have been tracking what we've been doing over the last three years, at least during my term of office, we've been attempting to get more and more people engaged in city government. We've expanded, for instance, the Rear-Front Improvement Commission, and new people on a variety of our commissions. This is an opportunity to get new people and more people involved. I want to also be very clear, the people that have been on the commission, those who remain, have done a fantastic job, and they're doing great work, and we want to thank them for their service. It's also an opportunity to give other individuals the opportunity to participate. So, we want to stay still, much to our protocol. First, I'm going to ask for a motion, and second, to approve the commissioners, the new appointments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, before we vote, I want to give individuals an opportunity to come up and speak. We're going to limit it to the five minutes. Please, as again, as I mentioned earlier, we as a group find it very important that we respect all of you and your thoughts. We ask that you do the same. I would ask, as we've said before, that we don't respond to any individual person, both any of us, we won't do that, obviously, for any of you, but also of any of the individuals that are commissioners, either the new ones or the ones that are potentially being appointed. Let's talk about the facts related, and what you want to share. So, with that in mind, are there any individuals who would like to make some comments before we do that, related to this topic? Yes, sir, please.
I'm Roy Burchard. I live at 7th and Gaines, and I'm a retired minister with the Metropolitan Community Churches. Justice is a prime biblical value.
Thank you.
Justice is a prime biblical value. I would hope that in your appointments, that you seek justice, especially for this commission, which, whose prime work is justice for the vulnerable. These are good biblical values. Violating them brings on lots of bad karma, so I hope that you will do the right thing.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Andrew Kiefer, 4th Ward. I've thought a lot about what there is to say, because there's so much to talk about, I mean, the varying states of affair and such, but locally, however, this last summer continues to stick out, as the damage by members of this sitting council and our mayor were guided, in a misguided and seriously gross reckless disastrous venture, in trying to usurp the independence of the Civil Rights Commission. It's still being felt, as of today. That legacy unfortunately had chosen to do that damage, and I remind you, your faces and names are attached to it. It was no misunderstanding. It was a illegal and ignorant choice that has cost Davenport, and it was very embarrassing. And here we are today. Yet again, are the citizens of Davenport supposed to see this action being taken in the replacement of three former members of the commission as just another misunderstanding? I mean, it's so blatantly, outrageously obvious that it is not. It's just another cog greased into the ugly, elite, and corporate-owned direction that the republic nation is being shoved into. But citizens, like myself and others, come forward continually to remind you, our representation, that we will not be shoved without address, and not without consequence. I want to congratulate the three new appointees to the Civil Rights Commission. You have replaced three individuals who have done much in defense of and service to those most needed, in need, within the community, and the community itself. So much so, myself and others would say that they were honored with the gift of removal this holiday season. Now, please understand and know this, all stems from varying interactions that have been had with the Civil Rights Commission, and the replacements. The three replacements did not need to be replaced, they were chosen to be replaced. This should not be happening. There is absolutely a chance that you three, in this action, are just a misunderstanding. However, due to situation, it does not seem as such. So be assured, most assuredly, the actions and actions of the Civil Rights Commission with you being placed on it, you three specifically, will be most watched and dogged, should you act counterintuitively to those who come forward to you and the commission seeking the protection, due process, and justice that the independent Civil Rights Commission is empowered to seek, do, and give, should it be proven and lawfully warranted. As a member and leader of a minority group, I have fought long and hard for our rights and protections, here in my home state of Iowa, getting our state civil rights codes changed to include my LGBTQ brother and sisters. And I will be damned before I see them or any other minority groups' pursuits of rights and justice undone by petty, gross, backroom, double-dealing, villainous, underhanded plots that only seek to empower elites, businesses, and others giving them gains, especially in the backyard of my hometown. I do not care if this offends you, and I am not sorry if it upsets you. Should you or anyone be true and just in your motives, intentions, and being, serving, protecting, and seeking justice for those most vulnerable and in need, then there is no reason for you to be upset or offended. You should rejoice that others, like you, are here among you to help right wrongs and do our utmost best to ever act in favor of those most in need and underfoot or thumb within our community. Always people over profit. When I came forward to the sitting council as a native son of Davenport, I reiterated and resonated what my grandfather, and fire marshal to Davenport for a great many years, Johnny Denikus, had taught me. We are only ever as strong as our weakest link. We must ever be mindful and recognize that we must always move with purpose to protect and strengthen it. As fellow citizens and community members, it is a most important and cherished ability within our civic responsibilities and civic duties to act and stand with purpose.
Mayor, point of order, time, please.
I understand. I'm about finished. Give me just one extra minute, please, if the holiday season can grant me that gift. It is a most important and cherished ability within our civic responsibility and civic duties to act and stand with purpose for equality in treatment, equality in liberty, and equality in justice. We do this for our neighbors, our communities, the people of our city, county, state, and our republic nation, not to act and move solely for you and yours, not to act and move solely for your personal gains, and absolutely not in ways that strike blows to exploit and undermine our most vulnerable and weakest links. So I say to you three, and actually to any, many numbers of you within these chambers, you represent the people of this city, not the interests of business, yourself, or others. You are to serve and represent our interests. Our interests are not always your interests. You need to ensure you are acting in our interests, as you were elected to serve them. As elected officials, you are members of the city and our communities. You do have to answer to us. We are not beasts, and understand, when things go so wrong, we, your constituency, fellow citizens of Davenport, community members, neighbors and friends, will seek to set you in what's wrong right. You should always seek to stand, support, and be one with us, the people you know and represent. As RuPaul says, "Don't screw this up." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to make a few comments? Yes, sir. Please, your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Evan Shank, and I live in the 8th Ward. First, I want to say to the three nominees to replace the commissioners, I've looked a little bit into their background, and I see that many of them have a legacy of public service already in their personal history, and I would like to believe that they're people of goodwill, who want to do the best that they can if they are appointed to the commission. However, I think that, that said, it's unfortunate that if they are good people, that their appointment to the commission would have to take place under this cloud. In September, when the city council abandoned the ordinance to dismantle the Civil Rights Commission, the mayor released a statement to media which read, in part, "With this matter behind us, I look forward to strengthening relationships and improving communication with those selected to govern the Civil Rights Commission. Their work has been and always will be vital to the long-term success of Davenport." But today and over the past week, it's clear that the matter was never behind us, and that there was no intention of strengthening relationships, or of improving communication, or of having real respect for the commissioners' work. Members of the community have not at any time in this discussion had the benefit of honesty or transparency from the opponents of the Civil Rights Commission, only obfuscation and bureaucratic maneuvering. But it is not difficult to read through between the lines to understand the causes of conflict between members of the council and the Civil Rights Commission, which has been an issue for several years, particularly now that the mayor has chosen to force out some of his critics on the commission, and replace them with his friends and political backers. The Civil Rights Commission represents our diverse community, and it protects the civil rights of our fellow citizens, and too many wealthy and influential people in Davenport think that diversity and the law are limitations on their unrestricted right to accumulate more wealth and more influence. Businessmen, property developers, landlords, and educational institutions that see civil rights law as an imposition and seek to relieve themselves of that burden by undermining and colonizing this commission are not friends of Davenport. Real and responsible, sustainable growth and the well-being of this city depend on respect for the people who live here and for their civil rights. I actually believe that the commissioners' work has been and always will be vital to the long-term success of Davenport. That is why the Civil Rights Commission should finally be allowed to operate as designed, independent of unwarranted political influence. Do you, on the city council, support the people of this city, all of the people, or do you see our civil rights as an impediment to business and property development? The mayor has already announced that he will not run for reelection, so he has no intention of being held accountable by voters for his hostility to the Civil Rights Commission. Anyone else here who is considering reelection or a run for another office should consider what your votes last summer and your vote tonight tell the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm a little shorter than most. Hello, I'm Don Stevens, Jr. For over 30 years of my life, I've been a resident in the city of Davenport, currently, for the past year and about a month, a resident in the city of Bettendorf. Now, I can honestly stand up here and say this, I know a large majority of the people that are on the city council, there's just a couple that I have never met. And I would like to also say thank you to Jackie for everything she's done for the city of Davenport. You know, I've come to council meetings off and on since 1990, and I've seen several different men and women hold the seats that you are currently holding. And it's easy for people to come up here and shout and get angry at you, because they don't agree with a position that you take, or a stance that you have on a particular issue, but the thing that they need to be able to understand, that it's one of the things you have to almost go online and look at the green sheets to understand, there's more to what you guys do than just come here every Wednesday and sit and listen to us speak, or the other viewpoints, and yell or scream at you, and then you make votes on particular issues. There's more to it than that. And I think it's easy to come up and attack the mayor, because, well, you don't like his stance on an issue, or attack an alderman, be it the alderman of the 4th Ward, or the alderman of the 3rd Ward, or an alderman at large. But the question stands, why are you attacking him? Do you live in their ward? If you do, and you don't agree with what they're doing, run against them. If you don't agree with the mayor's doing, run for the mayor's seat. It's easier to sit here and yell, and be loud, and spend five, six, seven minutes telling you what we don't like or we don't agree with, when we need to spend more time trying to find a common ground and a common cause, in whatever issue it is that we may have a difference in. I've enjoyed coming to the city councils' meetings over the years and learning different points of view, giving my point of view, and there is not a person up here that knows me that cannot say that I've never been outspoken, because when I have a position of importance to me, and I have something I feel, I speak loudly on it. I'm the one guy that went out and got 429 signatures to get the council's vote vetoed by the previous mayor, because I didn't agree with where the path was going on the transit bill. If you guys don't agree with something, and you don't like something, take a positive stand, go out, get signatures on a petition to seek an alternative position on, you know, what it is that you don't agree with. It may not always end up turning out the way you want, but to come up here and attack the council, I think that's the wrong approach. That's my personal opinion, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
I didn't prepare a speech, I didn't come here prepared to speak, I'm an activist locally in the Quad Cities, my name's Laura.
What's your address, please?
I live in Moline, actually, but if you'll just hear me out. Rodriguez, thank you. I am a member of a minority group, raising two children with special needs in the Quad Cities. When they grow up, they will possibly move to Davenport. I have seen a lot of troubling things for the special needs community, for the marginalized communities of the Quad Cities, and when I say marginalized, we talk about the marginalized of the society that they live in, they are not at the forefront, they are not the best represented, and when we have a civil rights commission in place, it is because that is there to protect them. It is there to speak on their behalf and protect them when nobody else will, like a mother would protect her children and come here and talk to you today. All I ask is that you hear the people of your wards, you hear the people that are criticizing you, and it's nothing personal. It is a direct attack when you bring somebody in from Palmer College, for example, who wants to gentrify the area near Perry Street, wants to displace people to make new housing for people that go to their school. When we want to close schools down south, down, you know, towards the river, you displace people and you shrink the places that they can live. All I'm asking is for you to listen to the people that are here today, think of them, think of why they're here, think of their motivation. It's not a personal attack on you, but what you're doing is a personal attack on them and their families, and the people they love that are vulnerable, and I just ask that you keep them in mind in the spirit of Christ this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else would like to make a comment?
Latrice Lacy, the 6th Ward. So, the Davenport Civil Rights Commission is very disappointed in the most recent attempt by the mayor to weaken the commission by removing those who have opposed him. We were hopeful that the move by the mayor and council to rescind the proposed ordinance amendment last September would be the first step in creating a more welcoming and open dialogue with the commission and its staff. However, it led to ostracism and the silent treatment, also known as retaliation in our industry. With the outpouring of support from the community and the council's decision to listen to the voices of their constituents and rescind the effort to hamper the efficacy of the commission, and the agency, and the commission and the agency believed that the commission would not only be preserved, but supported. The community was very clear that it wanted to preserve the commission as is. There's been no indication that there are concerns about the commission. In fact, we heard tonight that they served, and they were great. The commission has reached out to reconcile the damage caused through relationships between the council and the community and the commission, however, we learned that the council was no longer interested in having those conversations, or opening the lines of communication, something that the council repeatedly said that they wanted. In addition to not seeking to communicate with the commission and the staff, the mayor has completely deviated from the procedure that he both publicly and privately agreed to utilize to select and evaluate commission members. The commission is not under the impression that it can usurp or dictate the decision-making of the mayor. However, it is clear that choosing commission members should be done with careful consideration, intentionality, and input from the community and professionals. It is not a role that lends itself to nepotism and cronyism, something that the mayor has an extensively documented history of. It is unfortunate that the mayor would...
Point of order, please.
I have first. I have First Amendment rights. I'm ACLU attorney.
I'm just simply asking. I'm just simply asking to keep-
I didn't have the respect of not being touched on the behind, so he won't be entitled to the respect of me not calling him outside-
Just simply asking to flee, thank you.
I got it. It's unfortunate that the mayor would continue his attacks on the commission and protections that marginalized people depend on. In a time where people who look like me fear for our physical safety everywhere that we go, we fear that when we're simply going to the bathroom, one of the mayor's friends is going to follow us in to sexually assault us. We're afraid that when we go and report the behavior, we'll be ignored. We're afraid that when our bosses go with us to reiterate to the mayor that this appointee and friend of his needs to be removed from the commission that they're serving on because of inappropriate sexual harassment, that the commissioners seeking assistance will not then be, we fear that they will then be removed in retaliation for seeking compliance with anti-discrimination laws and wanting to ensure their employees' safety at work. We're afraid that when we go to get a proclamation at the council meeting, the mayor will think it's appropriate and walk up and touch us on the butt. We're afraid that at work, we can and will be sexually assaulted. Meanwhile, the perpetrator will stand in the face of video evidence and state that they've done nothing wrong and then ask to poll members of the audience to decide whether or not it's appropriate to touch someone else's body. That human resources and council will remain silent and take no efforts to investigate, acknowledge, or apologize for the violation speaks volumes. It speaks volumes to me as the only minority employee who works at City Hall. That's a lot of fun, but it also speaks volumes to the community. The most vulnerable people in our community are afraid that individuals and businesses who have discriminated against them can purchase weakened protections for them by changing the decision-makers to suit their needs. This action further validates those fears. The people who pay our salaries and elect you are all afraid that they don't matter. And this proposal is the second time that the mayor has publicly shown his hand on this particular issue. In addition to the ethical, moral, and legal issues brought about by this action and others, this move is especially concerning as the commission is currently reviewing evidence on a proposed decision to issue a final determination on a case where the mayor intended to influence my decision-making on a case, stating that the respondent contacted him and he thought that I should just administratively close that case because he didn't feel that it was a violation. The mayor reiterated his perception that complainants file baseless charges because they're upset about being fired, completely ignoring the role of bias, discrimination, and oppression in discrimination, ignoring the damning race, sex, disability-related disparities that are evident in all aspects of life in America, conveying a perception of a wealthy, white, straight male, conveying a perception that's something that these individuals within these protected classes have done to relegate them to a second-class status. Statements of that nature not only convey bias, but also a complete disconnection from reality. A further disconnect would be believing that changing commission members in the middle of this decision-making process is not harmful to the rights of all people who are involved. It's also a disconnect from reality to think that this will not involve a lawsuit.
Point of order, Ms. Lacy, five minutes.
I'm almost done. This is going to create unnecessary litigation expenses that's going to be passed on to the taxpayers. The commission has not been notified of the proposed changes, which indicates a failure of communication and a lack of respect for the work of the commission, the staff, and this community. The commission works hard to make the city of Davenport a community of opportunity where all community members feel valued, respected, and protected. I ask you all to vote no on any changes to the commission and that the mayor and clearly biased council members recuse themselves from any decision-making processes.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cassandra Irwin, 1430 and a half Jersey Ridge Road. I believe that would make me fifth ward, I just moved. I've been asked to speak on behalf of Dirk Hillard, who is the leader in the deaf community since no interpreter was provided for him.
What?
Yeah, an ASL interpreter was requested in advance of 24 hours' notice, and the lack of the interpreter here proves just so much why the commission needs to stay at as it is. Because as much as, as much as it is-
Point of order, please, sir.
To be fair, to his point, it is a direct violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act to make a public space not accessible. He requested an interpreter actually on December 10th, and he was told that the city of Davenport had interpreters, but they never showed, obviously. Most of you know Dirk because he's quite a leader in the community. And to show that his voice is not appreciated and not welcome, or that his very public government is not accessible to him, is unbelievable and completely unacceptable. So showing this, the mayor had mentioned new viewpoints and getting new people to participate in government. He makes it sound like it's a fun game to try when these are people's human rights. They're constitutionally protected rights that are being played with like a game so that friends or donors can participate. This isn't a club, this isn't a fun game, these are human rights, and it is unacceptable to place political appointees to this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on with the vote. Is there a... Name and ward, please, or address?
Brian Winger, second ward. Disabled veteran. Not that that matters anything to me, I just wanted to let that know, Mr. Mike Mattson, who interrupted me when I was speaking out for a person who couldn't speak out for themselves, you know, chastised me, just letting you know who you were chastising. So, I've been doing some research since I moved back to town here, and it's been very disturbing. First of all, I did some research on a thing that the, I'm not sure who did it, but it was a research thing that a professor did from St. Ambrose about racial profiling by the police force here in Davenport. So I found out, you know, I did a little research on it, and found out that the person that is, that did the research on it is an ex-police officer. So I'm sitting there and I'm thinking about, so you guys had police policing the police. That never works, you understand that, right? Police policing the police? You understand that when you're going to have a, when you're going to have something like that go on, you got to have somebody that's totally impartial. This person obviously is not totally impartial. I remember reading the story in The Times about it, and I remember one of his quotes that, that I just, I just blew my mind. He goes, he goes, "It's by my, oh, what is it? My observation by the special task force," I forgot what it's called, "another racist thing that you have targeting people of color," but that's another issue. Anyway, I remember him saying that, he said, "It's my feeling that nobody on that task force is racist." And I thought, wow, how convenient, an ex-police officer sitting there saying to the public that, you know, "Hey, there's no racist police officers on this police force, I'm telling you as an ex-police officer." That, seriously? And everybody just accepted that. Why? Why did everybody accept that? I'll tell you why it accepted that. You might want to, want to sit back and listen here. I did a little research of my own, and I found out in town here that there was 771 white men arrested during the same time that I'm looking at this, 18 to 44, and there was 770 black men arrested during the same time. During that time, there was 415 white convictions and 408 black convictions in the city of Davenport, which the city is 10% black, is what the last statistic I saw. So how are them numbers even, and you're sitting there telling us that your police force isn't targeting anybody? Can you tell me that? I mean, anybody, really? How are those numbers even? And not only that, but you have to see, somebody on this panel has to see this, the city council, why hasn't anybody done anything about it? Why hasn't anybody been alarmed and been like, wait a minute? Why do I have to see this? Why haven't even you seen this? Can you tell me that? You get these reports, right? I've seen this online. Anybody can see this. Why did this just go by the wayside? This is why we need the Civil Rights Commission. This right here. Because you all are violating, you're class traitors, who I refer to as the police force, just to let you know, you're class traitors are violating the people of colors in this town's civil rights. That's what's happening. I'm using my white privilege to tell you that you better do something about it or something's going to happen and it's not going to be nice, I can promise you. You're going to have something happen in this town really, really bad. And then you're going to wonder why. This is it right here, I'm showing you.
Thank you, sir.
Do something about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Dale Gilmore, I live in the sixth ward. I hadn't planned on getting up and saying anything, but I'm tired of the people coming up and bashing, you know, first of all, the mayor did not remove anyone. Their term had expired. It's the same way, you are all aldermen, at the end of your two-year term, it expires. If the public wants somebody that they like better than you, guess what? You're gone. If the public thinks you're doing a good job, you're back in. You know, I'm tired of people bashing the council and bashing the mayor. This is a mayoral appointment with, with the approval of the council. Nobody's saying we don't need a civil rights commission. Nobody's saying that. But I think that every once in a while, it's a good idea to get an outside perspective, a second perspective. I've read the bios on these three individuals that were appointed. They sounded to me like pretty doggone good people. Now, I don't, I don't know anything about the three people whose terms have expired and were not renewed. I don't know anything about them. So I'm not going to say that these three are better than those three. I don't know. But I, again, it's a mayoral appointment with council approval, and I strongly suggest that, that I, like, like the mayor said, he had nine applications. He chose the top three. Now, I don't know if three of those nine applications were from the existing city people or not. I don't know. And I don't think most of the people out here know. But do, you know, trust the mayor, trust his appointment. Okay, yeah, laugh, go ahead, laugh. You know, I've been to more council meetings than all of you combined. Yeah. Oh, because I know a little bit about what's going on. But anyway, I'll sit down and be quiet and I'll let somebody else get up and make a fool of themselves.
Thank you, sir. You get one shot, pal. I mean, that's what the deal is, I'm sorry. Come on, sir.
Pal?
I'm sorry, I would just, I didn't- Sir, we do give one shot to each person. And, and ladies and gentlemen, please remember, our usual process and protocol is not to let anybody speak during the appointments. For my ten years on the council, this, the mayor, we talked, and the council's been very kind, and we talked about this because we knew there was folks that had concerns.
Because of the actions of this last summer.
Not disagree, not, listen, not disagree.
I know Mike, I understand Mike.
So we, so the mayor and all of us got together, you know, let them, let them have their time to speak because they're citizens and we should hear them.
Right, right.
Okay, so you've had, you've had your time.
Right.
And so, so we want anybody else to speak-
Commissioners replaced did not need to be replaced. That is the point. They did not need to be replaced, and there are questions as for, as the connections to the mayor with these appointments because of prior cases such as Palmer. One of the appointments is connected to Palmer-
Point of order.
And others.
We need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. I think that we've had a call for the question. It's been moved and seconded, calling the question. We're going to, again, we're going to ask for a roll call vote. We're going to end up doing, on this roll call, we've already, we got to, we got to take this vote first.
Okay, I can't speak for a minute.
At the end, there'll be another chance to speak before the meeting's over, okay? Thank you. We've already, procedurally, we've got to follow through. We're going to call the, a roll call on all three. If you have a question on any one of those, you can reference them at that time. We're going to start with the roll call for approval of the three appointments.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes, I'm two and three, no on number one.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor, except as noted on Alderman Mattson's vote on number one.
Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, again, I want to thank you all very much for being here. As much as it, whatever, however you view this, I want to thank all the commissioners who have served and continue to serve. I want to thank the three new commissioners that have volunteered to do this job, and I want to thank you all for being here and for your input. Thank you. If there are, if anybody-
Vote him out!
Thank you. We have, there are no presentations this evening. Are there any petitions or communications from any of the council members? We'll wait for a second, we'll take a moment of pause. Okay, now we're going to move on to petitions or communications by the council members or myself. Alderman Mattson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I want to say thanks to you for your kindness to allow people to speak and to the council for your kindness to allow people to speak. That's pretty commendable. We went outside of protocol and it just shows that you're, you do show concern for the public, so thank you. Thank you to Jackie, 31 years, that's pretty cool. You've been a stalwart on the council here, certainly over the 10 years that I've been here. Your guidance and leadership and I, and I'm sure everybody else wishes you the best in whatever it is you decide, so every now and then come back and tell us what we're doing wrong, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Let's see, my next ward meeting, seventh ward meeting is next Wednesday, the 19th, at the American Legion Hall, at 702 West 35th Street at 6:00 PM. There'll be a representative from the Police Department, Public Works, and then I'll look for input. We go into budget here very shortly, so I'd look for input in any particular priorities or things you think we should focus on during our budget discussions. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to say thanks to Jackie, and not just as an alderman, but as a resident. You've been very helpful through the years, and I know that we have a number of employees that are leaving us at this, at this time or the end of the year, and I certainly don't know all of them, but just reminds us of the services that our city does give us. And again, this is really more as a resident, I've been here for 21 years, and thanks to all you. I know I've probably interacted with many of the people that are leaving. Thank you for your service to the city of Davenport, and I hope everyone has a great future and lots of fun ahead.
Thank you. Is anyone else? There is one comment I'd like to make. This is our opportunity to more officially thank Jackie. You know, Jackie has played an active role in various capacities within the city of Davenport and Davenport City Government, has been really a leader in her profession as well as in the work, and you've been that calming, steady influence on all of us, so thank you. She's recognizable here at City Hall for, not just for her work here on the dais, but as the first contact for special events for many years. Whether it was a block party or an outdoor concert or a road race, she was the point of contact as the city embraced the food truck trend as well. Jackie has served on the board of Southeast Iowa's Clerks Association, and I think it's important to note, and we can tell it by her performance, a master municipal clerk, and she's had that certification. As city clerk, Jackie had an active role in downtown Davenport partnership, oftentimes securing volunteers and working during the annual BIC Street Fest. She was a volunteer instructor at Junior Achievement in Davenport Elementary Schools. She was instrumental in the expansion of the Sister Cities Committee as it diversified from a small internal group to the community group it is today, hosting events and visitors from our sister cities around the world, and we have a delegation for China joining us tomorrow. As administration changed and expanded over the years, Jackie was always willing to step up, help out as the backup for recording city council proceedings, including its first recorded town hall meeting, and played an active role as the city developed its first website. She played an important role as city departments partnered on fundraising initiatives, including the United Way, holiday food and clothing drives, internal projects as well, and she informed a team of city, and she formed a group of city volunteers and has many years helped to coordinate as they- and has many years helped to coordinate as they carried balloons in the holiday parade, displaying the pride of our community and our city. Um, Brian, you got tough shoes to fill. Um, and we know you'll do it, but more importantly, I wanna, Jackie, I want to present you with something. It's been open once. There it is. A special commemorative clock from the city of Davenport for all of your years of faithful service. Jackie, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With no other items from our, my colleagues, uh, we're gonna move into, there is one individual approval item on our discussion agenda this evening. It's a second consideration for ordinance case number ORD 18-05, request of the city of Davenport to repeal and replace Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning by adopting a new zoning ordinance and map, and amending Titles 2 and 14 in order to make administrative changes to support the new code. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, ma'am?
First of all, I'd like to thank every single one of you for the time and effort you put into your job. That's why you're there and I'm here. I've sat on a commission. I know how much effort it takes. And I would wish that anyone who has a disagreement with anything in the city, sit on a commission, join a board, become part of your city government. Don't stand up here and just complain. I'm not complaining. Lucky you tonight. My name is Dr. Jill Berkey. I am in the 5th Ward, city of Davenport. I also own, uh, and am CEO of a Davenport company that has been in town for 14 years called Home Transition Solutions Group. The major, um, business that we provide is to help people downsize. People who've lived in their home for 40 years and are now moving into their two-bedroom condo. We help them go through their things, decide what to keep, what to sell, what to throw away. We help them pack, unpack, and move. But I also provide a service unlike any other in the state of Iowa. I'm an internationally recognized aging-in-place and senior safety subject matter expert. I also have the designation of a certified aging-in-place specialist. I walk people through the decision-making process of whether or not the home they live in now is appropriate for them as they age. We take into consideration the financial. They're still gonna have maintenance and taxes, transportation, how will they get around when they can't drive? Health, do they have the health goo- good enough to stay in that house? And, um, socialization, because isolation is one of the bad things about staying in your home as you age. We consider the housing needs of now and in the future. I then use a mobile app that I developed that's being used in 12 countries around the world called Silver Spaces to do an interior and exterior inspection and provide the client with a report on the things that they could change to that home so that they could stay there longer. For example, lever handles instead of doorknobs, appropriate flooring, and that kind of thing. Non-fruit-bearing landscaping, those are trip and fall hazards. My purpose here tonight is related to the efforts being taken to update the zoning ordinance. I've sat on P and Z. In the housing industry, there's a term used called accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. These are often referred to in the public as granny flats, backyard cottages, or in-law units. But they play a very important role in affordable housing, especially for seniors. And affordable housing in the Quad Cities is absolutely horrific. I'll use a couple of scenarios, uh, as examples, so you can see what I'm talking about. An 80-year-old man can no longer afford to maintain his home of 50 years. So he puts an ADU at the back of his house. He can then rent that out to a college student who can then maintain, help him maintain his house. He can then stay in that house for longer. An older couple live in a huge house. They don't need all this space anymore. So they create a smaller unit within that house that they can rent to a college student. A family with an aging parent who lives far away wants that parent to move here so that parent can be closer. So they create this ADU in their basement. One member of a couple has dementia, but the partner wants to continue to care for their loved one in the home. So they convert their garage into an ADU. Initially, they rent it out, but eventually, um, a caregiver will live there in exchange so that they get free housing in exchange for caring for this person with dementia. Please consider these options when looking over, looking at the overall zoning plans for the city. I, I understand that setbacks and lot sizes and many other, um, already existing regulations will have to apply to ADUs. That's obvious. But please do not leave them out of options for Davenport residents. I can save people between $30,000 and $80,000 a year by keeping them in their own home. That is the purpose. ADUs bring housing options. They can keep neighborhoods strong and diverse and, and address one of the biggest concerns that anyone growing, growing older copes with. Where will I live? And how can I afford it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else on the zoning ordinances, please? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Kim Brown, and I live in the 1st Ward. And I'm also the, um, president and founder of QC Harm Reduction. And I want to speak to the needle exchange program. I believe there might have been a little confusion at the last meeting. Some folks, I think, thought, kinda got that confused with a supervised injection site. But what is on your matrix, already on your matrix, and that you are zoning for, whether it's yet legal in Iowa or not, is a needle exchange program. So I wanna, um, piggyback on the mayor's comments a little earlier, um, talking about sharing and being with his family at this time of year. We went, um, and did street outreach today and, um, probably, um, trained and distributed about 20 Narcan kits and provided other, um, safe consumption supplies, test strips. And, um, there's a lot of people out there that don't have a home and that don't have a family and that have nobody to share with, and we are their lifeline. And I am again asking you to take a second look at your map and zo- keep QC HR where we are is where we're available to the folks that need our services. They cannot walk out Brady Street to 53rd for services. You don't even have sidewalks out there, by the way. People in wheelchairs go down those roads and have nowhere to go. So I would like to, again, tell you that we are not satisfied with the zoning. We would like to, um, sit down and talk about it. We would like our options that we've spelled out quite clearly to be considered and not disregarded. Um, I also want you to know that we have a, um, medical director, Dr. Michelle Yates, who is involved, and she feels the same way about humanity. And I think we need to remember all the humans out there that, um, need help, need housing, need services. They are poor, they're marginalized, and they are homeless. And they are all over our community. So we can paint pretty pictures, but that's not what we see when we go out every day. So again, I want to encourage you, implore you, and ask you respectfully to consider our requests when zoning for a needle exchange program that is already on your matrix. So we do not have to wait until something's passed to do that, or you wouldn't have put it on your matrix. Doesn't make any common sense. I also want to remind you of a resolution that you, um, uh, provided and, um, presented last year in 2017, "From Darkness to Light: Honoring Survival and Resilience." You're talking about honoring the homeless, knowing that there's hundreds of Davenport residents, including kids, families, and single adults who live in precarious, temporary living situations, and as a result, can be defined as homeless. The city of Davenport embraces harm reduction programs, including readily available naloxone. Not giving readily available naloxone, including harm reduction is a whole continuum of services. Needle exchange is key to that. We have a hepatitis C epidemic in this county. We have people dying because they cannot get treatment, and a clean needle will cost you 15 to 35 cents, and as I said last week, upwards of $400,000 when we leave folks go to the tertiary stage for treatment. We need needle exchange. People are five times more likely to get into treatment when they can access a needle exchange. And that is been shown in all the data and statistics coming from the CDC and the Boards of Health. I wanted to remind you of this resolution because the way that the poor, the homeless, and the marginalized are treated in this town, there is no harm reduction, except QC harm reduction. There is none. And we would like to keep, stay where we are to serve the people in need in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you also for your work, Kim, all the work that you've been doing. I appreciate it. I think we all do. Next, anybody else, sir? Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Platt. Uh, 2029 East 38th Street. I'm Rick's Ward. Um, and I'm here as a volunteer with Kim. Um, and in particular, I guess I wanted to address, um, the specific changes that we've requested in, in your ordinance. Um, and it's not complicated. We've, um, exchanged emails a couple of different times. We've outlined it very carefully, and essentially, we're asking that the, uh, current location, which is Zoned Commercial Transitional, appear in the matrix for the use of needle exchange. We additionally request that the Commercial Downtown Zoning District be also listed as in a, a permitted use by right for the u- for, uh, needle exchange use. And additionally, we'd like to see in the health services and congregate living permit that we have to request, we'd like to see not only specific information, uh, on that apparent application. You have to provide specific information. We would like to see, um, criteria indicating what would determine an application that is unsuccessful, and what would determine an application that is appropriate and useful and approved for the community. There's no criteria there, and it really does open the city up to all kinds of allegations of, um, discrimination, or unfairness, or, um, favoritism, or whatever. You don't need that, and, and the people in the community don't either. If there's some criteria there, then it makes sense to everybody, and it's fair, and it's black and white, and then there can't be any confusion. Um, other than that, um, we, you know, appreciate the time you've spent working on this. We've not been particularly impressed with any concrete steps. It appears that, um, the people involved, and I don't know if it's in your zoning department, if it's in your community development department, I don't know if it's behind this desk. I don't know. But there has not been any real concrete steps to make any of these changes. And, um, we don't think it's that complicated. We do, everything we do is volunteer. We, we receive no funding from the city, no funding from the state and the federal government. This is all a community-based and funded operation. And, um, we think it's only appropriate that we get a little bit of help to, to stay situated where our clientele are and where we can do the best job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Megan McLemore. I'm actually a visitor. I'm, um, an attorney and, um, a public health expert from Human Rights Watch, based in New York City. And I had the honor and the privilege to spend the day today with QC Harm Reduction. So I just want to express my concern about the zoning ordinance issue and its impact on groups like QC Harm Reduction and other social services that may be operating in the downtown district. Because what I saw today was that QC Harm Reduction is a frontline public health intervention. And in order to be a frontline public health intervention, you need to be on the front line. You need to be where the clients are actually located and available and accessible to receiving the services that went out, that I saw go out today. And the people who were reached today included people of all ages, races, ethnicities, backgrounds, veterans, young people, old people, all, and many of them longtime Davenport residents. And what was being offered wa- were everything from blankets, water, um, to condoms, to naloxone, um, kits. The overdose prevention kits have been extremely important. QC Harm Reduction has already saved hundreds of lives in, just in 2018, um, through their distribution of overdose prevention kits and, um, the brief trainings that go into them. Um, these trainings have gone to family members and to people who use drugs themselves and to maintenance workers in, in downtown sites that are likely to experience overdose, um, experiences and scenes in their bathrooms, et cetera. I mean, this is a frontline public health and safety intervention that needs to be supported and protected. Um, my research on Iowa has shown that in 2018, um, there was progress made in the opioid epidemic, that, um, overdose deaths have started to be reduced in Iowa due to, in large part, activities such as the QC Harm Reduction is implementing. And I would urge, um, the council to, um, to take the, the concerns of QC Harm Reduction in terms of their location very seriously and to support, expand, and protect social services downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else on the zoning item? Seeing none, will an alderman move the consideration? It's been moved and seconded. Is any discussion from any of the aldermen? I see Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Tom, before I start in with my comments, can I, can I confirm is, is needle exchange allowable by the state of Iowa?
Not currently.
Not currently. So it is not allowable in the city of Davenport currently?
That's correct.
Okay. If it were included in the new zoning matrix, it would be a placeholder, but it would still not allow needle exchange as an, as, as an approved use?
Correct. I think what we'd do is probably have the code editor mark it to note that it's not currently legal in Iowa, but when it becomes legal, it's allowed.
Thank you. So, so, um, let, let me start in. Um, first off, I, I thank you to the folks from QC Harm Reduction. And I want to first start off by saying, I, I don't want you to confuse my position or anything I say as, as me being in opposition of your organization or what you're doing, okay? I think everybody on this council, I'll only speak for myself, we know you're doing good work in the community. We do want to support you, uh, but we also want to do things, uh, in a certain manner, and I've got some ideas. So the first thing, and I'd also say, if you, if you want concrete things to happen before, uh, the, the third reading, I'd be happy to sit down with you and our staff, and we can discuss this. Uh, I've spent the last week making sure that I absolutely knew what your requests are, what your options are, and what our options are a- as a council. So as far as your zoning goes, from what I understand, you would, where you're located now, you would be grandfathered in as a non-conforming use, but you can operate there from now into eternity unless you decide to cease operations and cease those operations for greater than one year. Otherwise, you're good to operate where you're at. Um, now, there are a couple of things that we could do, and I want to advocate for those. The first is that we could change a corridor that is being, uh, being offered to be zoned as CT into C1. I don't think that changing an, an entire corridor for a small use is appropriate. The other thing that we could do is we can make needle exchange an acceptable use The other thing that we could do is we can make needle exchange an acceptable use in Commercial Transitional. I'm not sure we want to make that decision either. We may, but that's a discussion we would need to have, and I think it's an in-depth discussion we need to have. So I was one of the aldermen who represented the council in the zoning rewrite process. And one of the things that I tried to stop was that we shouldn't be legislating things outside of zoning through this zoning process. Things that we would typically have great discussions on in their own right. And I'll give you a very small example. They initially included apiaries, beehives. You can raise beehives in a number of different residential places. And I said, when we brought forward chicken coops, urban chickens, we took six weeks and we had dozens of people show up every week and we heard those folks and we had discussions and we made changes, okay? And we passed that on its own merit. And the thing I said in the meeting was, if we want apiaries, I'm cool with apiaries, but we need to have that as a discussion over six weeks on its own. And so apiaries wasn't in there. And I don't know how needle exchange was missed in that conversation, but it's there as a placeholder. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think it should be. What I think should happen is that it should be taken out of there as a placeholder. And then when the state of Iowa allows needle exchange as something that cities can do, at that point, we have to have the discussion of where do we want needle exchange centers in our city and how are we going to zone them? And we take the six-week process, and that's all we discuss is how the city of Davenport zones needle exchange. So I'm not going to make any action on that tonight because I want everyone on the council to think about that. And we can have discussion at the first committee of the whole in January, and we'll see how that discussion goes. But potentially, I would make a motion to amend to take that out as a placeholder, knowing that once the state of Iowa makes a decision, we have to respond to that decision as an acceptable use. So I do have one other thing unrelated, and that is, in some discussions I've had in our community development meetings and also meetings with the mayor, the DRB currently sits at, the Design Review Board currently sits at eleven people. They've had some issues with getting a quorum during their meetings, and they also have three vacancies. So the idea has come up that potentially the DRB could go down from eleven people to nine people. I also do not want to make that a motion tonight. I want you to consider that. I would appreciate it if Bruce could send out some information to bring everybody up to date, so when we come back for the committee and whole in January, everybody can have the information they need to make that decision. Thank you, Your Honor.
And is there normal procedures? Everyone comfortable with that process? Good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I share Alderman Gripp's thought that it should be a whole community conversation in its own right over six weeks. Actually, so I have concerns about the safety of individuals who are using, that they might run across someone who has needles that are not safe or something along those lines. We want to make sure that this is done thoughtfully and carefully because we do know that you are doing good work and we don't want to have any problems with that. We want to make sure that you can stay in access of the front lines, as the phrase was used earlier. I would support having that conversation ahead of the state since it does seem imminent and then the ordinance, the change would be in place with the note, obviously, in the code that it would only go into effect when the state makes that change. But then we're all ready to go so that vital service is available where it needs to be as soon as it can be within the state legisla, within the state code. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Seeing no other comments, will the clerk, in this case Jackie, I think, are you going to call it again tonight, this one? Good. Will Jackie call the roll on the second consideration of this ordinance?
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And will an alderman move consent of all the, I mean, all the items on the consent agenda, please? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn? Ambrose? Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
I have a request for a motion to suspension of the rules. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
The rules are now suspended, and we're going to review the resolution awarding a contract for the specific and aggregate stop-loss insurance to HM Insurance Group. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak of that, on that? And maybe Brandon, just maybe you could just, what is that? If you could talk about that a little bit.
Insurance, everyone's favorite topic.
It's your favorite topic?
It is my favorite topic. So stop-loss insurance is a, it's a health insurance that we have in place. The city is self-funded for health insurance purposes. There's a stop-loss, which means that any single claim that rises above a certain dollar value is actually covered through this reinsurance on that. So you have before you the motion to renew with HM, which is the company that currently provides our stop-loss for next year, for the beginning of January one. And this particular product, a new, slight difference to it that we added in for this new contract, is adding in not only health claims, but also having the prescription claims be added to that value as well, just a little bit of extra protection for the city.
Thank you, Brandon. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, will an alderman move the resolution? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Is there any other, any public with business this evening? Name and address, of course, please.
Ron Swiner, two-three-six-six West Forty-Seven. Y'all got one of these tonight. What this is, seven years ago, my son got murdered in this city. The system failed. There was no justice for Will. Period. I could go into great detail what happened that night, but that's not why I'm here. The justice died for him that night. Justice was dead. For several years, I had to fight to find out what happened. The city council made one of the smartest decisions. We got a new chief. Who was open, who was honest, who gave me record after record. Who explained to me procedures, how we needed to change things, and he has. That's my son's justice. After seven years of me standing here, different nights, nights I'm not here, I'm watching you on TV, I'm talking to legislature up in Des Moines. I'm here because that's the value I taught my sons, both of them. Make it a little better. Because he didn't get his justice. I've helped, I hope in my heart, make it better because I promised him as he laid in that casket. I will get you justice, son. My justice is being here, making sure our department, the Will Initiative, how crime victims are treated. That's a wonderful program. It is a legacy that's tied to my son. It's not tied to me. You think I like standing here time after time? Yes, I do. Because I made a promise. Now, as you enter your budgets, I have a challenge for each and every one of you. I have the million-dollar challenge. That's what it's going to take. We cannot arrest our way out of crime, but our department must be staffed. It must be funded with computers, adequate software, manpower to ensure being a deterrent. Right now, it's a joke. The kids are, oh, there ain't enough cops around. They know it. Our next program, I had the joy and privilege of writing one, showed me what that program does, how it interacts with the community. That program needs to be doubled, if not tripled. But that's going to take money, folks. That's going to take going after the pot for law enforcement. We love our parks, we love our skates, we love this and that amenities, but you know what? You're not going to get them here if they don't feel safe. So it's going to take a little more to get a little less. You're all looking at me and say, that don't make sense. No. A little more money for our law enforcement so we get a little less crime. So this initiative, I'm calling a little more for a little less. I've tried hitting the ballpark here, folks. That's a lot of money. You're able to come up with several hundred thousand dollars for ballistics. We have a thing for new squad cars in here, wonderful. But you know what? It's not enough. We got to tighten our budget somewhere here or there. We got to uncuff our law enforcement, our chief, our assistant chiefs, our officers, the people over there, so they can do their duty. So we as citizens will continue to feel safer in our community. That's a lot to ask of this council. But you know what? You've made smart decisions before. You got us a law enforcement that gave my son a little justice because he made the system better. Now, you as a council must try and make this system greater. That is my challenge. A little more for a little less. Some people go, a little more, million dollars. You know what? That's a drop in the bucket. What are we spending sending juveniles to other facilities because we have a small system? Or to jail? Or to house them? It's a drop in the bucket, folks. You got my challenge. Let's see what you do in the next fiscal year. Give my boy a little more justice and a little more justice for everyone here in the council room.
Thanks, Ron. Yes, sir?
Well, I thought I'd come up one more time, just real quick. It's an interesting thing to make this point. As you'll see, I'm wearing a green polo and a hat. This is the first time in my entire time of ever coming to a city council meeting that I've ever actually sat at a city council meeting and made money at the same time. I'm getting paid to actually be sitting here because I haven't gotten a single order to go pick up somebody's food and take it to their door. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but for me, it's a good thing. But I've enjoyed this, being able to come back over here and come to a city council meeting. I didn't realize it was going to be Jackie's last day, but man, I've seen some unique things go on. Remember, one of them was a former alderman of a ward that made a statement the night that was his last night here. The mayor at the time, I believe it was Pat Gibbs. And everybody knew this alderman as Larry DiOttremont. But that night, Jackie laughed because she remembers that night because he decided to set the record straight, that his name was not Larry DiOttremont, as we have all come over the years to know the guy, but his last name was actually Dotremo, which was, okay, you got us there. But I've enjoyed this. I really enjoy coming to these meetings, giving my input over the years. And to me, it's an incredible thing when you get to participate in your city's government. But part of doing such as a citizen, make sure you're informed, show respect to everyone that you speak to. The people that we elect, whether we agree with their stance on an issue or not, we should have enough respect for their office that they hold and others to not disrespect or lambast anybody. Believe it or not, it says right on this podium right here, it says, "No personal attacks." It's in red. And I can't tell you the number of times tonight I've heard personal attacks on Mayor Frank Clips, and the man sat there quietly, respectfully, and reverently. It's just one of those things that, we used to have that running rampant, we used to have where you could talk as long as you want, then we ended up with the little speaker meter. I guess I was one of the ones back in the past that used to be where I came up and took advantage of talking as long as I could. But then, at one point, I actually was one of the quickest ones to get up and speak. So what I had to say, sat back down, had an alderman one day say, "Do you really need to come up and speak as long as you do?" And I said, "I think you might want to ask Jackie," but I believe I only spoke for a total of three minutes and fifteen seconds, which is less than the five minutes. So maybe if I build it up enough, maybe at the end of the night, I'll get a total of ten minutes, right? He goes, "Where'd you get that from?" I said, "Just being sarcastic." But it's one of those things where we just got to laugh and enjoy, you know, what the people do here. And I will say this, thank God for the city council for having this. If you are watching this, or if you are here in the chambers and you don't understand your city government, I have a challenge for you. It is called Citizens Academy. Sign up for it. Go through the entire class and learn what the whole city process is about. You'll learn about how our city finance manager does his role and his staff, and Tom Warner and his staff. And Tom's a very, very knowledgeable person over here, and he'll explain history to you of the city of Davenport. But it's the things that you can learn. Go to Citizens Academy. I think that one of the aldermen or mayor here could tell you exactly how you can go about getting involved by going and participating in a Citizens Academy. I just think that that's something people need to really take an opportunity, if they're a citizen of Davenport, and go to at least one course. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
My time has expired.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gibson. Sorry, we had the procedure before.
Yeah, I don't appreciate that, but anyway, Cosby Gibson, Eighth Ward, Twenty-One Eighteen West Sixty-Sixth Street. First of all, I'm going to say, Frank, the city is really going to miss you because I don't know all the particulars that you have going on, but I know you really haven't had a chance to be a mayor for all the people like you wanted to. And I'll say that, even though I know you can't say it. Okay, getting back to what I was going to say for the people out there, you guys need to listen to them because remember, all you guys would be voted off the council, except Mr. Mattson and Mr. Ambrose. Those are two people that I've seen up here for years. I don't know what you guys got going on, but anyway, everybody else, I don't know. Everybody else beware. But really, you need to listen to the people. And I've been saying this for a few years about the prejudice and stuff that's going on. And I know every officer on this police force is not prejudiced, but what's happening is the bad ones are being protected, and that's the problem. But just like I was saying about that process that the guy at St. Ambrose is doing too, see, you know, nobody's going to go bad when you're riding along with them. So I mean, that process in itself was really crazy. But anyway, I just wanted to tell the council people to represent your constituents that voted you in, because all of them are complaining that you guys came to them with an agenda to represent them, and now all of a sudden, they're saying some of you have turned against them. So if you have, beware. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Dave Kenny, Second Ward. First off, I want to thank Jackie for her service to the city of Davenport and hope she enjoys her retirement. of Davenport, and I hope she enjoys her retirement on behalf of me and my family and my brother, Tom. We're all going to miss her tried and true statement, "Ten yeses, Your Honor." Anyway, I have a little follow-up from last week, and what Ron was saying here, the police department needs to be supported in whatever way they deem necessary. One thing I think the city should look into the council is cameras on strategic places. I know we have it in one section of town, but it beats the heck out of me, why we don't have a camera on our bridges. I, some of you new members of council, maybe not aware that one night, this was like maybe six years ago, I had two of my vehicles totaled, they were parked in front of my house because there was a shooting, a guy was shooting another guy coming from Heatherton. And so that's how I kind of got involved with the Nets Department, and the, we had a group down at Heatherton, like a community group, and we had events down there, and like closed off the street, had festivals. I have, don't get involved with that much anymore, but I think the person that did that could have been caught if we had a camera on all the bridges. Because a lot of the crime, if you're going to commit a crime, where are you going to go? Go across the river, you know? And they have the technology now, read license plates. And I don't know if this can be done, but I've mentioned to police department, police officers, and they say, "Well, we can't do anything about it. It has to be the council that does that." And of course, you guys have, would have to. Okay, I didn't come up with the money. Also, I think the police department, they generally do a great job. I, I just think they have quite a bit of training, but I think they need to improve, need to expand community policing in the Nets program. Start from there, could be expanded. And then also, the training to deal with situations that are very volatile, on non-lethal ways of diffusing situations. I know they get some training, I think they could use some more. A perfect example is, I, I wasn't aware there was a video on the, this was Scott County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff, that ended up killing a man who was pulled over for a, he had a warrant for his arrest. And I looked at the video, and his life, you could say possibly was in, in danger because the guy was backing up and going forward, and he was trying to get the guy out of the car. I guess my question is, the guy taking, the person taking the video was watching this and not assisting, which I didn't understand, but I, I'd like to see the video of what happened before this, you know, before this. Because if somebody's, if you're hanging the door, trying to pull somebody out, and they're going, the door's there, it is dangerous. And, you know, but did this person need to be arrested that bad that his life was at stake? I guess that's the question. If you're, if you have a warrant for misdemeanor shoplifting, you know, is it that important that person be arrested? I, you know, he had fled the police in another state, so I know he had several charges on him. And these are, you know, these are things that the police department has to go over. And I know, I said to one of the police officers here afterwards, "Why don't they just get out of the car? You're going to arrest the guy, throw down stop sticks behind the wheel, and then go ask him to get out of the car? If they take off, they're not going to make it very far." Well, I was told you can't chase them unless it's, they have a gun crime, or it's a forcible felony, or something like that. But, I mean, the decision whether to, if the officer decides, "I'm going to arrest you no matter what," then they're putting their life on the line, and that person's life on. In this case, the officer felt like they had to end it this way. So I, I don't know, I have to see the video before, what happened. And why didn't the Davenport police officer, if he got out of the car, block the door so they couldn't get back in? I'm not sure how it all went down, but I'll try to get some more of it. Okay, that's that. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Civil Rights Commission, I believe that the three members that were added or replaced, one of them was African-American. I believe the three that are being appointed are all Caucasian. That concerns me. No, it isn't? Okay. So that, I wasn't aware of that. So I, I wanted to make sure that you had racial diversity in the new members of the council, or the commission, so that's a good thing. And I know one of them that's leaving is African-American. The decision is the mayor's decision, and I understand that. I just could have, I, I think there could have been more community input before the decision was made. Maybe I'm being unrealistic because there's been some tension, but the, but just deciding it without any community input might not be a good way to do it. And I'm going to be sending an email about, just one second, about why our marijuana laws in this state are very backward and outdated. And I need, I'd like you to think about, it's an article from Iowa City Press Citizen, and I'll be back to talk about it maybe next month.
Thank you very much. Yep, thank you. Adam?
Adam McWilliams, 5th Ward. I just wanted to say that the positions that you guys hold is very time, time-consuming, and you also have, you know, other jobs, you know, besides this. And Frank, the mayor, it's been an honor having you as mayor, and I stand behind you on wanting to step down to spend time with more family, because being mayor does take up quite a bit of family time, so. And on a different note, switch subjects here. If you all know, I had a, my first Global Messenger speech last Wednesday, so that's why I couldn't be here. Unfortunately, I couldn't create a clone to be in two pluses at once. I did really well at my speech, and the Cobble Shrine donated a generous amount to help not only myself, but other athletes continue to do sports year-round. And I guess I did a good enough job that I've been selected to help with opening ceremonies, and I had the option of saying the oath, or running with the torch. And I've decided to run with the torch. So I'll be representing Davenport in the Winter Games after the first of the year.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Seeing no one else, before we end the meeting, I know Jackie would like to say a few words, so.
If I could. I just wanted to tell everyone, I wanted to thank you for some of the best days of my life. And I've had an amazing career here, and this is a great organization to work for. And I am very proud to have, and I am till Friday, been an employee of the city of Davenport. I was kind of thinking back, and I thought, just some fun facts. In 31 years, I have served with seven different mayors. Over 300-plus city council members have processed over 10,000 city council ordinances, resolutions, and motions. I've attended over 1,400 city council meetings, and I have processed over 3,000 special event applications. And I could go on and on and on, but I won't, to save some time. I wanted to thank the councils and each and every employee that I've worked with. They've given their time, they've explained things to me when I'm new, as I'm sure they'll do to Brian. And I've learned a lot. I respect my city government and the persons who choose to run for office. It will never be me. So no one has to worry. But yes, they give of their time, so much of their time to serve their citizens. And the one thing I always say to people, when I went to clerk school, one of the first things I learned was, never do anything in your community where you, where you will be on tomorrow morning's front page. I have lived by that rule for 31-plus years. I don't know where my future, maybe I'll be on the page for winning the lottery or something. But I'd also like to thank my friends that are here this evening for their support and their friendship. I'd like to thank my grandchildren, Jack William and Lucy, for always giving me their unconditional love. And most of all, I would like to thank my son. Matthew works in the administration department now. He has always been my motivation. I took this position in 1987, just after he turned 12. And he now is 43, so good benefits were important to me at that time. I was going through that braces stage, and it was time for me to use a degree that I had pursued because I had worked for the University of Iowa before I came here. And he has grown up with the city always in his life, and I, he probably will continue to do that. And I'm very proud of my family and the friends that I have, and everyone that I've truly gotten to know and enjoy in this position.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I have to say, with 10 grandkids, years are outstanding. This, the epitome of patience there. Thank you all very much. You got to make sure you take them out for ice cream when this is all over. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.